I am conducting this meeting, this hearing tonight as my role as a cable television member. The issuing authority for the City of Revere is Mayor Brian Orego. Notice of tonight's meeting has been duly published in the Revere Advocate on August 18th and in the Revere Journal on August 2nd and August 9th. I will provide a copy of those notices for the public record. Tonight's hearing is mandated by the Federal Cable Act. The city is currently involved in a federally required ascertainment process. The process of today's hearing is to identify future cable-related community needs and interests and for future, uh, future cable service by RCN. Once the city has gathered community input, it will forward the results to RCN and what amounts to a request for a proposal will basically inform RCN of the kinds of services and facilities the city expects we provided during any possible granting of a license. Thus, the testimony that you will give today is very important. It's very important that everybody participates. The more participation, the better, the better the ascertainment hearing. So we urge you, encourage you, all of you, to speak candidly and specifically about any cable-related matters. You must come up and provide testimony in order for your views to count and be part of the official record. So please come up and testify. When you come to speak, please give me your name and your address. Be very clear about your name. I'm asking you to say your name once and please spell your last name for the record and your address and repeat your address. Because this is an ascertainment hearing for the city, I ask that you pose direct questions to RCN to answer them and they will go through me. All testimony and inquiry and our inquiries should be directed to me. Finally, I'd like to clarify that while this is an ascertainment hearing on cable television matters, again, there are two related subjects over which the city nor the mayor have any authority to regulate. The first is the rates that RCN charges for its services. So we can't get into rates. The second is the commercial programming that RCN chooses to show on its cable system. So I realize that these are two important issues for cable subscribers. While people are certainly free to comment on the matters of this evening, it is important for everyone to realize the city cannot mandate the specific rates that RCN can charge nor can the city mandate the commercial program into Comcast, excuse me, RCN carries on its Revere cable system. With those introductory comments, I will open up the hearing tonight. And testimony from the public. Please come to the microphone, speak clearly, make sure you're saying your name clearly, your address clearly. I will do it in this order. First will be the members of the public, out of respect for the public, then it'll be the city officials to testify, then it will be the RCN representative to make a brief statement. Okay? And at the end of that, what I will do is conclude the meeting. So first, I'd like to hear in an orderly fashion from the public. So if you'd line up behind so that we can go in order, who would like to be first and come up and give their testimony? And please say your name loudly and clearly.
Matthew Amato, 65 Thelo Ave. Amato, A-M-A-T-O.
And repeat your address.
65 Thelo Ave.
Thank you.
It's excellent to see you, Ms. Danzoni.
Pardon me?
On a side note, excellent to see you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, just real quick to, to RCN, we ask for your continued, continued support for Revere Television. It is access to information. I don't have to, and I can't go over the numbers with you. I'm sure you know how, how well and, uh, how often it's used by the Revere public. We, we just ask for you to maintain your support, uh, any funding that, that you're making available to us. And honestly, uh, high definition would be an excellent thing to have for, for the RTV. We have the Sandcastle Festival, bring in a million people every summer down Revere Beach. We should be able to broadcast that in, in high definition. So we really just ask for your continued support, maintain your funding, and bring some high definition to, to Revere Public Television. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Who would like to be next? Come on up. Please state your name clearly, spell your last name, and then repeat it again and your address twice.
Uh, my name is Stephen Fielding. Last name is spelled F-I-E-L-D-I-N-G. 25 Winthrop Avenue, which is the location of the Revere Office of Elder Affairs. And I am speaking on behalf of the approximately 13,000 seniors, many of whom watch Revere TV, which is part of the RCN, um, network. I'm speaking to, uh, directly about the funding that may be maintained by RCN once they get a contract and want them to understand that RTV, Revere TV, is a lifeline to both active seniors and those who are isolated in their home, who cannot, um, get out too often and who rely on Revere TV for newsworthy or event information, particularly regarding seniors. Over the last four years, Revere TV has produced the Revere Senior News, which is a monthly program for seniors to become aware of the activities at the Rosetti Collins Senior Center. They have taped monthly newsletter, um, excuse me, they have taped monthly luncheons, entertainment specials, presentations, and a number of special events and air them regularly for seniors on Revere TV. They continually post on the Revere Bulletin our newsletter information, our monthly menu, our senior shuttle information, as well as a number of public service announcements. And they have produced and taped two senior walkthrough video tours about the senior center. In the last four years, Revere TV has taped 53 events that have aired continuously on their network. I ask RCN to consider maintaining the funding so that seniors will continue to be able to receive information regarding anything about their particular age segment. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Who would like to be next?
Carol Ty, T-Y-E, number 51 Endicott Avenue, Revere, 51 Endicott Avenue.
Thank you.
Would it be appropriate at this time to ask you a question that has been asked of me several times?
Yes.
If RCN comes in, does it mean that only RCN will provide service to Revere? Or will the city be able to negotiate a contract with both RCN and Comcast and they will be in competition for our business?
The city has the, according to the law, the city has the, uh, the right to negotiate with more than one cable provider. And the circumstance will be that if they do both receive a contract, they will be in competition with each other.
Well, I speak in favor of competition because for years, people have been complaining about the prices they pay. And I know that the law is written so that we cannot control the programming, we cannot control the cost. But I think competition is very good. And as a school committee member, um, I would be very grateful if RCN came in and provided high-definition TV. Because as people know, we have Channel 22, which is the school channel that everyone listens to. And it'd be wonderful to be able to provide, um, a venue at which our children could really show how much they shine on a high-definition TV.
Right.
I also would like to speak in favor of Revere TV. We, I have had so many experiences with them, both as on-air, um, provider, also as a person who serves on the Beachmont Improvement Committee, the Revere Beach Partnership and the festival. I know that today they were recording the eclipse as it came through. They provide such a service for so many people who cannot get out to enjoy all of these other festivities. It'd be great if they continued to have the amount of money that they had. I know that Comcast gives them a 4.5%. It'd be wonderful to have the full 5% negotiated from both companies. And it would be especially good to have a high-definition TV. Revere TV, I cannot say enough superlatives about them. They have been absolutely terrific and provide a great service to people of all ages in our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would like to be next. Please state your name, then repeat and spell your last name and your address and say it twice.
Rashid Moukhabir, M-O-U-K-H-A-B-I-R, 592 Beach Street Apartment 6. 592 Beach Street Apartment 6. Uh, I'm here to, uh, voice my opinion about the competition. I'm in favor of the competition. Uh, I know that I have been paying a little more than my friend who lives in Quincy. I have been paying a little more than my other friends who live in other series, that they have more than one cable company. And also, I owned a business in the past in East Boston. And I remember when I called, uh, customer service, they treat me with respect, not like when I'm here in the city of Revere, when I call Comcast, they just don't care about my opinion. And if I want to make a complaint, nobody cares about my complaint because they know that I'm going to end up to go back to them and use their service because they're the only one. If RCN happened to come here, we would like them to take, uh, our opinions into consideration and treat our residents with respect and, uh, provide a better service with affordable prices, the same as in other series. The other matter that I would like to talk about is, uh, I would like to show support to Revere TV. The reason is because there is so many events going on in our city and we don't think that they are fairly covered by other, uh, media companies or by other channels. Uh, how many times do we see Channel 7 here? How many times do we see Channel 2 here in our city? Most of the time, we see Revere TV covering all the events happening in the city. We want to hear about our schools. We want to hear what's going on in our city councilor. I don't think that these things are covered by other TV channels. And also, uh, I would like to speak as a Moroccan-American community organizer on behalf of my community that they have been training in the Revere TV and they are very proud to have a voice in the city. Uh, and also, whenever we want to do an event, we get like a tremendous effort from, a tremendous support from Revere TV. And they would like to give an example of the Moroccan Cultural Day where we use Revere TV as an advertisement potential. We were able to reach out to more than 2,000 people who attended the event. And also, they were training some kids with the camera that they were covering our events and they felt very, very proud of the job that they have done. And thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Would like to be next. Hello?
Hello. Kathleen Heiser, H-E-I-S-E-R, 51 Endicott Avenue, Revere. So I'm here tonight to support Revere TV. As a very active member of our, my community, both being the president of the Beachmont Improvement Committee and being on the partnership board, I'm really involved all the time and don't get to see a whole lot of things that are happening in this city. So for example, when we had the art, the sand sculpting festival, I was working inside the tent the whole time. I never got to see one sculpture during the time it was happening. So the other night, I was so happy to tune in to Revere TV and see the whole thing played out with total explanations of everything that was going on. So in essence, what I'm saying is that if you're busy, a person that's busy in the community and can't get to anything or everything, you get an opportunity to see it. And I, for one, really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
They do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, if you'd like to speak? Oh, well, come on up. Who would like to be first? Come on up. Hello? You have to use the mic and you have to tell me your name and your address. Well, push the button. Okay? Thank you, Arthur. Push the button, speak into the mic, and you have to give me your name and your address and you have to spell your last name and say your address the second time.
I gotta spell my last name.
What would you do?
Rose Napolitano, N-A-P-O-L-I-T-A-N-O.
Thank you.
And 250 Coachman.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
I just have very little to say. I brought my last six months' bill from Comcast, okay?
Okay.
And I just wanted you to know that every one of them, every single one went up. No explanations why. I've called them, asked them. They said the government. It's always the government. Is that true?
Is it the government?
Yes. That's the, that's the answer I got.
I can't, okay. And I can't answer any questions, as I said earlier, about any rates and any programming.
Well, that was the reason why I came. I dug them out, put them all in order.
Okay.
And I just wanted, have I here Comcast people?
Right. Just for RCN. Right.
And that's all I have to say, except to say, Revere TV is the best thing that's really happened to Revere.
There you go.
Okay?
You're right.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you very much. Would like to be next. Go ahead. You have to give me your name and spell your last name and then your address twice.
Absolutely. My name is Luanne Miola. I'm like a Mary, E-O-L-A. I live at 474 Revere Beach Boulevard, Revere. 474 Revere Beach Boulevard, Revere.
Good. Thank you.
Um, I think competition is great. I had, um, the vice president of Comcast call me last week, Mr. Kelly, and they were trying to help me unblacklist my unit. What he brought to the table to me was, he brought up my mother's obituary that, this is unbelievable.
Really?
Um, it's really terrifying to me, that how the obituary read was that I was the daughter of Mabel Miola who lived there and incurred the bill and that Mr. Eric Knight was the son-in-law who also lived there and took care of her. I did not live with my mother.
Okay.
Live with my daughter. Okay. He said he could not unblacklist the apartment until there was $1,500 paid. That's fine. I get to see no TV. I live with antenna TV. I don't know what's going on in the City of Revere. I don't know anything. And he said if I do need 911, I need to get a Verizon telephone. So as far as Comcast goes, that, that's baloney. I'm a very sick person. I do need 911 and I can't have it. I can't even have Comcast. I, um, they ran my credit again, told me they were going to install me last week, called me the day before and said, "Sorry, you can't be installed unless you pay $1,700." Well, that's extortion. That's asking me to pay somebody else's bill. So I, yes, I, I very well accept the competition with RCN. I also turned in over 30 signatures from the Breakers condominium on the beach stating they would like a change. I would like a change. And right now, I don't have anything.
Okay.
And I don't think it's fair that they're extorting money from people over 62. Sorry. Thank you.
Okay. And I remember giving your documents to the sonographer at the last meeting.
Yes, I was.
Right. I submitted them for the record.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right. Okay. And, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Would like to come up to the microphone. Hello?
What? Is it working?
It's working.
Oh.
Name?
Jackson William Bill Jackson.
Okay.
As my friend over here in the yellow shirt gave me a new name.
Can we have your real name? Can we just have your real name for the record?
95 Stan Avenue, Revere. First of all, I'd like to-
So say your real name for the record. I know it's Bill-
William Joseph Jackson.
Okay. And could you just spell your last name?
Spell it?
Yeah. So that, we don't have a sonography here tonight, so that's why I'm asking these people to spell their names so when they take it off the tape- Okay.
First of all, I want to reiterate what, uh, my friend over here, Rashid, said because I've been working with him for a long time. And again, I'm talking about Revere TV. The help and the exposure that they've given to this organization is beyond belief. They have helped us in every single way possible. So not only does the Moroccan-American community in the city find out what we're doing, but all the people in this city find out exactly what we're doing. The other point that I'd like to make is with respect to the, uh, our local government. Uh, sitting behind me, we have Ira Novoselsky, Arthur Guanasa, who's my councilor, John Powers, and Steve Marbeto. The point is that all of us have access to what's going on with the government. And without Revere TV or the other company that may be coming in, the citizens do not have any way of knowing what's happening with our government. There is, there are two newspapers, but that's not sufficient. And, uh, you know, every, uh, almost every Monday, every other Monday, there is a city council meeting. And all of us citizens of this, uh, city of Revere have an opportunity to find out what's going on. Somebody brings up a motion. An emotion is an idea of something they would like to have done. The council then debates the motion. Sometimes the motion is, goes to a committee, various committees. Sometimes it's voted on right there that evening. My point is, is that without Revere TV or our, the other company that may come in, we do not have, there is no access to find out what is going on. And by the way, I want to say one other thing before I sit down. These seats right here, last year, was it in the fall, Rashid? We had a city council meeting. And the city councilors were students.
Mm-hmm.
And the mayor, he stood right here, and he wants another one of these meetings. And, um, we kind of worked on, uh, you know, agenda, what, what people want, motions they want to make and so forth. But it was a great success. They enjoyed it so much. And as I say, the mayor said, "Can we do this again next year?" And we plan to do that. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. Would like to be next? Yes. It's on. It's on.
Hi, my name is Eleanor Vieira. It's V-I-E-I-R-A.
Yeah.
I live at 27 Ford Street in Revere. Um, sitting here, listening to everybody, I would just say, you know, most, most everybody I heard, uh, to support Revere TV, I would go along with everything they say. Um, I represent, I represent the Revere Beautification Committee also. And when I did my first show with, uh, with Revere TV, I was very welcomed and taken care of by Bob. Uh, he's, he encourages, encourages us very much. And I guess if it wasn't for the Revere TV, we wouldn't have got the word out. I think more nonprofits should jump on the bandwagon and, and go with Revere TV. Uh, I also go to church and I bring the tapes to church and Revere, it's shown on Revere TV. So it's, it's a help for all, all the people who can't get out to see the service. So I think, uh, Revere TV is, uh, best thing since sliced bread. So that's it.
Okay. Thank you so much. Anybody else? No. Who's coming up? Come on up.
My name is Diana Cardona, C-A-R-D-O-N-A, 2 Park Avenue, Revere.
Okay.
And I'm here to support Revere TV. Uh, we are very new in the city and the city's been welcoming us very much to the whole family. So we're very happy here. And knowing that we have the Revere TV, it's a community source. It's a, it's like the voice outside. And we get to broadcast a lot of the things that are going on, different festivals from different areas. So we can visit each other, like the Shirley Avenue and the Broadway. So we can, we know what's going on and we can visit each other and, and be united. And also, what I like is because it gives, um, a very, uh, good opportunity to all people from every country, from every culture. So I see there is a lot of diversity in the city. And I like that because we can get to taste the food to each other and we can get to learn different things from each other. And, and I see that it's very united. So, and like my sister says, united, we're stronger. So-
Oh, good.
Yeah. So keep Revere TV.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else? Anybody else who'd like to speak from the public? Come up, sir.
Hi, my name is Michael Stowell, S-T-O-W-E-L-L. I live at 111 Mill Street, Revere, MS.
Okay.
Uh, I, like a lot of other people, agree with Cheryl, uh, Carol Ty.
Right.
It's time we get rid of the stranglehold that Comcast has on us.
Okay.
Uh, so we welcome, uh, RCN to Revere. I just have one question. I wonder if, uh, RCN has a program for, uh, senior citizens as far as discounts? And that's all I want to know. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is anybody else who'd like to speak? Well, elected officials are next. Okay. Carol Ty. All right. Go ahead. If you give your name and your address and spell your last name and give your address again.
Ralph Decico, 49 Washington Street. Last name spelled D-E-C-I-C-C-O.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm in favor of the city issuing another license to another cable company. I think, uh, having competition is great for, for the people of Revere. Um, I know you don't want to get into rates, but I think it would be, um, great for, uh, competition. It would be great for the rate payers. It would be great for services. Um, like the person, uh, already, the person just said, uh, the rates, not only for seniors but the disabled community. Um, I'm wondering if RCN has that and also if RCN can provide some of their neighboring communities that they service, um, just so that we can see, uh, what they do do around this area. Um, but I am totally in favor of the city issuing a license to RCN.
Okay. Thank you so much. Again, I want to ask one more time before I move it. Come on up.
Hello, I'm Julie Villada.
You have to speak closer to the mic, please.
My name is Julie Villada, V-I-L-L-A-D-A. I'm at 86 Gay Ave.
Okay.
Um, as a resident in Revere and a homeowner, I'd like to see competition instead of just being stuck with Comcast.
Mm-hmm.
As a lot of people stated, they're not great with customer service and being only stuck with one, um, at least internet provider because we use them solely for internet.
Okay.
Like, there's no chance of, like, negotiating rates or anything. So it would be kind of cool to have competition and not just be stuck.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Again, one, one more time before I close it to the public, I want to ask, before I move on to the elected officials, is there anybody who'd like to speak who hasn't spoken? Okay. Not seeing anybody, I'd ask the public officials if they'd please come to the microphone. Would you say your name again and spell it? And also what, if you want to say what your office you hold.
Thank you, sir. My name is Ira Novoselsky. I live at 53 DeHone Street in Revere. Last name is spelled N-O-V-O-S-E-L-S-K-Y. And, uh, I know a lot has been said prior to us, you know, getting up to speak and we probably reiterate everything that has been stated.
That's fine.
Um, but I, I still would like to go over some of my points. And of course, everybody's bringing up Revere TV and we do want to make sure that, uh, they get the proper operational and programming funding, you know, out of this contract. Uh, I know they get a percentage out of Comcast and Revere TV has-
Would you speak up a little bit, Ira, into the mic so-
I, I show cancer.
Thank you, sir.
And, um, I can tell you that, uh, they show a lot of programming. They're very multicultural. They, um, they work with our Asian community and they work with our Latino community and our Moroccan community and of course, our American community, uh, for those that were born here and brought up here through all the years. And, uh, they show a lot of the city events, uh, that occur in the city and let the people know again what's going on around the city and that a lot of the good things that are being done. We would hope that, uh, RCN provides more HD-type channels, uh, like the sub-channels that, uh, Channel 5 may have and, uh, WeTV and Geta TV and, uh, that they're more in HD mode, uh, along with our 8, 9-
again what's going on around the city and that a lot of the good things that are being done. We would hope that RCN provides more HD-type channels, like the sub-channels that Channel Five may have and WE TV and Geta TV and that they're more in HD mode, along with our eight, nine, and 22 channels. Competition is a key, key thing in any, any world. And I think Revere needs that. And I would hope that this brings a lot of competition. One thing was stated before by Steve Fielding about senior citizens, and was also mentioned about discounts for senior citizens. They do get a 10% discount through Comcast, but it's only on the basic TV.
Yeah, right.
And I think we ought to do better for our seniors. You know, that's, you know, them getting a 63 or 93 cent discount, to me is a slap in the face. And I think we, they should be getting a better discount rate on a higher package rather than just the basic. And someone was telling me that they may require Medicaid or be on Medicare in order to get it. I don't know if that's true. But, you know, if you're 65, you're a senior citizen, whether you run Medicaid or not and still working, you still should be getting that aid discount. And the last two things that I want to mention are kind of together. They have a bundling package. And I would hope that RCN either makes a more sensible bundling package or go à la carte, where people can kind of pick and choose what they want and pay for that rate. Whether it's going to be higher or lower, I don't know. But I would think that we should be able to do better on bundling. If I, if I need, like another channel and it's on two different tiers, I have to buy both tiers. And I don't think that's right. You know, they're shoving it down our throats. And I think we ought to have more capability and more choice on what channels we want to watch and pay for. So that's it for now. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Arthur Guinasso. I live at 2 Martin Street, Revere. I'm the Ward Three City Councillor, and you spell Guinasso, G-U-I-N-A-S-S-O. Mr. Chairman, I have the pleasure of being the longest-serving city councillor in the city's history. And I can attest to the fact that over four administrations tried to get other agencies to come into our community to give competition to the present Comcast. Because we believe very strongly that competition leads to better prices for our consumer. And certainly, it's not hard to believe in here, the prices that people are paying, and I know this is not part of the privilege, the package of what you're delivering today, but I think it's what my constituents want me to say. And it's something that I say because I enforce it. I'm part of it. I pay $244 a month for my cable service. And I don't even have HBO and STAS. So I'm not really looking for the extras. And so many of my constituents share the same pain. So we open our arms to competition and we've been waiting for years for someone to come into our community and offer some competition to Comcast. So hopefully, the event will happen that we get reduced rates. Now, as far as the programming, and I think Ira said it quite nicely, that our citizens, our senior citizens are getting a way, way low reduction rate. I mean, it's almost like to some, some citizens, it's insulting. I think we could do better. And I think with competition, that's going to do that. And I think that the services that are provided by Comcast internally for our programs that we offer out through the city, they do a good job with that. And there's no question about that. But there's also, and when they think, offer these programs on HD, high definition, I do review some of the council meetings. And I do see the quality is not really what it should be in today's world. So I think the consumer also wants to see a product on their TV that's one that's legit, clearly that they can see and visible. And everything is, is the way the other channels are. So we offer out to you and we offer you these sentiments and we welcome RCN to come forward and hope that they hear, I know they're in attendance tonight, hope that they hear that the plea of the people of Revere as to some common sense to the delivery of the product, but also some common sense to the delivery of the pricing. And I, and off of that, and I thank you for your opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Powers. Last name is spelled P.O.W.E.R.S. I reside at 46 Naponta Street, Revere. And I represent the Ward Five community in the city of Revere. I think competition is good, whether it's cable TV, political or otherwise. I think it gives people a chance to make decisions, to have different venues on the table. I'm thrilled tonight that RCN is thinking of coming into the city of Revere. And I realize that the city government, whether it be the mayor or the city council, cannot control the rates. But if the rates are competitive, then the citizens in the city have an opportunity to control those rates by selecting the company they want to represent them. I think that a lot of the programming bundles that are out there are perhaps some of the things that people don't, are not interested in. And I think that's another issue. People should be able to select programming that they have a particular keen interest in. I think that high definition is a great issue. Revere Cable TV, Key TV, does a great job providing service, whether it's in the school department, city government, or, or even events around the city. However, I think the high definition is necessary. And whatever cable company is operating, they should be providing that, whether it's eight, nine, or Channel 22, to the residents of this city. It's, it's just so important. I feel that, you know, we've had cable TV in this city back, I don't know, maybe 35, 40 years?
Years we have.
Yeah. We had George Duffy when he was on...
Colonial.
Yeah. And the rates back then were seven or eight dollars a month. And now the rates, people are paying 200, 180, 240. I mean, that's an awful lot of money. In many households, that's a car payment. And I, I think that people should, again, as I said before, be able to select what they want, the programming that they want. I think the, the rate paid by the cable companies, which is now 4.5%, if it were 5%, that would make a big difference and would give Revere Cable Television more revenue to provide even better programming. So I hope that RCN will be coming into the city and there'll be good competition here and the, and the rewards will go to the citizens of this city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor. Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. Stephen Morabito, 84 Florence Avenue. That's Morabito, M.O.R.A.B.I.T.O. I'm a councillor at large for the city of Revere. Therefore, I represent the city as a whole. I think it's very important as a councillor to make sure the voices of the people are heard. Not only that, that their interests are best represented. And bringing RCN into the city and negotiating with them will give the people of this city a choice, another option, an alternative for cable. With that said, what I ask from RCN, if a deal is negotiated, is to match the ETP funding, to give us more money as Comcast does. Also, as councillor Novoselsky said, look into giving our seniors more of a discount than Comcast does. Not only to match Comcast, but to go above and beyond what Comcast does. And this is what I ask for as a city councillor for the people of Revere. And this is what I have to say about Revere TV. They do a magnificent job. Not only do they let the people of Revere's voice be heard, they allow the cultures of different people throughout the city be shown on our local television access. Therefore, it's very important that we make sure they match what Comcast gives or does better. So I'm in favor of this negotiation. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, councillor. Come on up.
Dan Maguire, M.A.G.U.I.R.E., 114 Pearl Avenue, Revere. I echo the sentiments of, of Revere TV, they do a great job. And I would hope that this board and the mayor would demand the same funding mechanisms for the ETP fund and for the public access, Revere TV channel. But I have more of a question to you, George, is DirecTV pays nothing to the city? Is that a separate entity?
That's seven and a half.
On their own?
That's correct.
The city could never look into, is that because it's the airways instead of the wires or...
You have to speak closer because I can't hear you back there.
Oh. My question is to more of the board is, does DirecTV pay any fees much like Comcast or RCN do?
No, they don't.
And that is because they don't have to by federal law?
They don't have to, not required to.
The city couldn't negotiate with DirecTV?
No.
Okay.
If they applied.
Right.
Right.
Right. Because those, I mean, we have a large DirecTV viewership that doesn't see a school committee or a city council meeting or an event. I would love to see Comcast and RCN try to work to provide a mechanism to our DirecTV subscribers, just for those specific channels, if they could.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any other public officials or public that would like to speak? At this time, I would like to have the Revere TV.
Robert Dunbar, Dunbar, D.U.N.B.A.R., 385 Broadway. And first, I'd like to say that Revere TV welcomes any and all cable providers to the city of Revere, more than any. And I have some prepared remarks, which I read, which are shorter than the last time. So...
You may as long as you want.
No problem. So first off, I'd just like to say that Revere TV was established on June 1st, 2008, as a nonprofit 501(c)(3) and is currently located at 385 Broadway, Suite 203. Revere TV operates public access channels eight, nine, and works with 22. Programming on these channels includes city council and school committee meetings, candidate forums, high school sports and graduation exercises, concerts, festivals, senior events, and much more has been talked about. Money from the cable franchise fees are used to operate facilities, employ staff, trainers, develop curriculum, operate training workshops, scheduling and maintain equipment, produce local programming, manage cable casters' shows, and publish promotional materials to build audiences. Revere TV has been successful in collaborating with many nonprofits, including the Historical Society, the Revere Beach Partnership, the Revere Senior Center, the Revere Veterans, Revere Chamber of Commerce, and the mayor's office, and many others. Revere TV continues to train community members in digital media through our classes and our diverse members produce programs on a wide range of subjects, from our newest members creating programs to inform their communities, to longstanding programs like McKee Casoli's Say No to Drugs that educates youth on the dangers of drug use. Looking ahead, this is an exciting time for Revere TV. We are well underway on renovations of a new permanent home for Revere TV at 261 Washington Avenue. This facility will increase our ability to do more arts and performing, performance programming, along with the current programming produced at Revere TV, and a second kitchen studio that members will be able to create cooking shows and nonprofits can promote healthy eating through their missions. Revere TV seeks to provide more options to view, hear, and promote programming, provide more mobile-friendly content, and offer a diverse program of schedules, workshops, in all facets of digital media. We want to increase our live streaming of programming, especially local sports. While technology continues to present itself and is an opportunity for higher-quality programming and more enhanced services to cable viewers down the road, it remains a constant concern to our operation. As technology is constantly changing, the need to remain relevant by upgrading our equipment and services carries a continuous expense. Revere TV has provided documentation, which I have here, for our needs in the next franchise. But I'd like to focus on two brief pieces. One is dual-carriage HD channels, so that in order to maintain our relevance and to reach the maximum number of subscribers, we need a presence on HD channel tier with a signal quality on par with the highest quality local broadcast stations. And SD carriage for those who do not have high-definition equipment. Channels should be located in a consecutive or near-consecutive run of the channels. And as RCN has provided HD program channels in Brookline, Burlington, Framingham, Lexington, Needham, Newton, Stonem, Maltham, and Weston, we look forward to being added to that list of franchises, you know, if and when RCN gets the franchise. And as a second inclusion, the electronic program guide, which residents rely on the electronic program guide to make decisions on what programs to watch, has a scroll for the channel lineup, as well as using the EPG to schedule recording of such programs. And that really is the conclusion of my statements on that. So we just look forward to that and I'll submit documentation to you.
Well, the record, if you would.
Sure. Thank you, George.
Okay. Thank you so much. Before we go on to the, are there any other public officials in the audience that would like to speak? Now, if there are none, I can go back to any of the public that would like to speak, that would like to say something, repeat something that they forgot to say, or they heard and they would like to enforce it. So I'll back it up, other than hearing none. So at this time, I would like to have the representative from RCN come up, please. And if you would, would you state your name, your address? And it's the same thing, you have to spell your last name for the record. Okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
My name is Thomas K. Steele, Jr., S.T.E.E.L. And I've been with RCN now for some 20 years. We had a, initially, we were building and we built to about 17 communities. And every, every community that we enter, we're in competition with the existing cable operator. We have to build on the poles, we have to de-up the streets to a degree and, and create a new system.
Okay.
We'll try to be as minimally disruptive as we can to the community, particularly on major streets like Broadway. We try to go across rather than down and, and avoid any impact on businesses. But for the most part, I'm, I'm particularly pleased to see a turnout. We don't always get these kind of turnouts. And to hear people be interested in competition. I can tell you that competition works. You will, we as a company have to exist against the giants like, we compete in a dozen communities against both Verizon and Comcast and then us. So we have to provide customer service at a higher level in order to survive. And we stress that. So you'll see increased customer service. You will see lower rates, especially initially, because there'll be promotions, we'll be trying to get you, they'll be trying to keep you. And it's, that's, that initially is the, the biggest effect you'll see dramatically. You'll, you'll probably be approached by Comcast to, to sign a contract for a year or two at a certain rate so that you don't go to RCN. Naturally, we ask you to hold off on that. But, but, but there is, there is, everybody has to understand one thing about cable these days, there's a considerable cost to the programming that we provide. So the rates won't drop through the floor, they'll still be, but they won't be in the range that I've heard spoken here tonight. You'll have choice. You have the ability to say, I'm going to RCN. Or, RCN, I don't like what you're doing. I need, I want this package from Comcast. You have, you have choice. It's empowering and it's also good for public officials because you can tell people, don't complain to me, just go to the other guy.
Can you talk into the mic so we can hear you?
Yeah. So just go to the other guy. So I've heard a lot about Revere TV. As you know, George, we, we told the mayor that we were interested in coming to Revere. He acted upon it. He advertised, this is how the process works. We applied. You sent us a report that we would respond to.
Right.
So we're already sort of engaged in some negotiation as it is. I can tell this, this room that what we are willing to do is to provide three HD channels for the public access for Revere TV. Simultaneously offering the regular channels, the standard cable cast, and also providing high-definition. It was noted earlier that we, we've done that in a number of communities. We have, we do that voluntarily. Increasingly, people watch the HD tier. And people surf through the HD tier. And people have very little patience for the programming quality on the lower, on the standard definition channels. So I think you'll find that the council, the council will be, have to increase their budget for makeup. The lighting will have to improve slightly. The lighting will have to improve slightly, but in, but you'll see that more people will see them as they surf through, and more people will be aware of the, and have a better quality picture. So we're willing to do that as part of our new bill. We're also willing to do something that we've done in a dozen or so communities, and that is, Bill, as we construct our network to provide service to homes, we would give, in essence, the city, two fiber connecting schools and municipal buildings, going point-to-point, very fiber-rich. This would allow Revere TV with just a laptop to do many more remote locations, live remotes and things of that nature, but it'll also help the city with its data needs and its interconnectivity. So we would provide, I know the school committee woman was here, and we're anxious to work with the schools to provide the highest-quality program we can. We've already agreed, even in this initial stage of the negotiation, to go to five percent. We pay five percent in most of our communities, so we're willing to do that. It's not such a great thing because, you know, we, it's five percent on our bill, it's passed through to the customers, but it is committed to the, whatever the city wants to do with that funding. So we, we have a good, a good service, we offer a good service, and these days, it used to be we would come and we'd talk about cable TV and H B O, but these days, people are as interested in high-speed internet access as they are in cable TV. Believe me, I know that because people are leaving cable TV, they just go streaming and picking up their video programming in that way. We, we actually were the first to offer Netflix through our converter. Comcast has since copied us. We also, we offer Hulu and will be offering more, particularly where there's an older demographic, it's easier for them to stream and to see programming that they might otherwise not feel comfortable doing through a computer. So we're, we're pleased with that. We, we have an offer of a one gig, one gig speed to residences at sixty-nine ninety-nine, but our typical service is a hundred, a hundred and fifty. The speed is there for those people that need it for their businesses, or especially home businesses, or need it for their, just for movies and entertainment. So we're proud of our service as an internet service provider, we're proud of our cable service. We would like to do more à la carte programming and break the, the channels down so that we could offer affordable packages. We do that now, we're bound for some of the contracts, by some of the contracts that we have with large providers like ESPN, which sort of keeps the price up. But that's breaking down, and you're finding that more and more programming is coming, streaming, as opposed to the way we do it now, more traditionally as a cable company. I've heard that there's a lot of interest in the senior discount. We, I didn't address that in our initial negotiation, but I'll certainly be willing to listen to the, to you, George, and to the mayor and to the councilors as to what Comcast is doing and how we match our, our better that for senior citizens. I know it's a, I grew up in Somerville, it isn't the same Somerville I grew up in today, but I grew up in Somerville, and we serve Somerville, we serve, we're building in Everett now, and we're happy to come to Revere. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer the question.
Well, I do just want to make clear the services you offer. You do offer the R C N cable service, you're the R C N high-speed internet and the R C N telephony?
We do, yes, we offer telephone, we offer three.
Three, right. So I just want to make that clear, that you offer those.
Yeah, it's, it's a, no, land-based, you know, not a cellphone, but land-based phone, right?
Okay.
And we offer that in a bundle package.
Yeah. Would anyone like to whom we, to ask, ask R C N any questions? Councilors, yes. If you just get up to the mic and you have to give your name and address again?
Yes, sir.
You don't have to spell your name.
Irenova Selzky, Ward Two, Councilor, fifty-three D Home Street, N O V O S E L S K Y.
Thank you.
I actually have one, one question and potential item that we could probably get. Hopefully, we can get, make sure there's drops, live drops at all the city buildings, and veteran organizations, and our, and discounts to our nonprofits.
Okay.
In the city that, that, that we have. And to you, sir, I would like to ask, who are the members of the cable advisory commission, committee that, is there one for the city now?
I don't have it off the top of my head, I'm not the only one, but I don't have it off the top of my head.
How many, how many are there?
That I don't know. I'm gonna have to get back to you on that, and I will make sure I get back to you.
Okay. And my last question is, how long will it take to build the system?
The, what was the first question?
Drop, simply drops into the buildings.
Oh, oh, yes, well, I'll talk to the, I'll talk to the city about that, we'll talk to the mayor and the committee. Rather than have redundant drops of basic cable service, we'll be looking to provide fiber to the buildings to allow the video and data to be connected that way. But we can talk about that, that's part of the negotiation. If you already have it, you don't need another one, and I think the institutional network has a tremendous value, it has, in all the communities where we serve. And was there another one? Oh, that, it's a good question. We have to get on to the, tell us the poles owned by, jointly by Verizon and National Grid, and we have to make, have, it's called make-ready. We have to, if the, we have to have certain spacing between all the wires, and depending on the cooperation we get from the utility, the utilities, which was pretty good in Everett, hopefully will be, continue to be that way in Revere. It could take to do the planning, get the design done, get the franchise, you know, six months to a year, maybe longer depending on how the winter is, there's, there's factors that come into play. But we're, we did a, our final franchise agreement, our final cable license in Everett last December. Was it last, yes, last December, and we've significantly built out the city today.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes. You have to state your name and address again, please.
Ralph DeChico, forty-nine Washington Street, DeChico, D E C I C C O. Just a couple of questions about the service, the service that you provide. Number one, do you offer DVR service? Is it cloud-based? Also, once someone does, if you do grant them the license and they do have the equipment, is it the standard cable boxes? Are you going to non-cable boxes, which a lot of the, a lot of the cable providers are going to lean towards? Thirdly, once the equipment is in people's homes, if, if there's a problem with it, do we, is there service call prices for, if there's a equipment failure, or if there's any problems with the, with these, with the equipment, does the customer have to entail a service call charges?
Okay. We definitely have a DVR. A lot of people can't watch TV anymore without recording it and watching it later. It is cloud-based for that purpose. You can, you, we have what I'd call sort of Motorola boxes, kind of standard boxes. We also offer, and more than fifty percent of our customers use a TiVo box, which there does, has a lot, almost reads your mind, and allows you to, to watch Netflix, like I said, or Hulu, also does a lot of programming, has a lot of programming options. We don't have the, the feature where you can speak to the remote and it, it does things for you, but we're working on that, by the time we get here, I think we will. And as far as service charges to the home, if, if it's a problem with our service, there'll be no charge. If it's a problem that, with the customer's equipment, for instance, that they may have that's different than ours, because we do require a converter, we don't have any, you don't have any choice, it's digital programming and it has, it's converter-based. If it's a problem with a converter you might own or some other reason that the wiring is bad, then there may be a charge. There's not always a charge, but there may be.
Okay. Are there any further questions, anyone who would like to have any further questions? Okay.
Up.
Yes. You come up to the mic, and you have to give your name and your address, spell your last name, please. Take your time, take your time. Bobby? Oh, speaking of the mic, yeah. Thank you. You have to state your name and your address, spell your last name.
Maxine Oborsky, O B O R S K Y.
Okay.
Forty-six Wade Park, North Revere. I have a couple of questions, if I can remember them. One is when, when you talk about the DVDs and the H Ds, do you have to, you have to buy these equipments? And if you get them from the companies, you rent them, as Comcast does. I'm not an expert on cellphones and internets, but I manage to get by.
Right.
Mr. Gonasso mentioned the cost he pays, and I, without my bundling, which I had to purchase a phone for an amount, and hook that up, and I was supposed to, if I give that number out, it should have been signed on my Comcast on the TV. It doesn't. So after trials and tribulations to the office in Malden and the, the numbers on the bills, they finally told me that I needed new equipment. So I'm not about to pull out wires and figure out where they all go. So, and it's difficult where it's set up. Comcast, the service is just, I've been on the phone with them for two hours, and they transferred me all over, and they can't answer my question. Fuck. Finally, excuse me, they say that, they try to, or they attempt me to try to fix the problem myself. And if that doesn't work, they will send somebody out to fix the wires outside. Most of the time, it's the wires outside. If they find that that's not the thing to do, they will come into the house, and they're, of course, there's a charge if it's my equipment, which I understand. But with all this, I don't have DVDs and H Ds and all that. I'm a senior citizen, I own my own home, and the cost without, I pay a hundred and seventy, I would pay a hundred and seventy dollars because I have the phone, which doesn't work. If I go to the office and forget that, I will pay the hundred and seventy dollars. All I have is basic cable and extended, which is fine, and my little internet, and that's all I have. So if I were to have the H D and DVDs, I either, you'd have to rent them from the company's R C N. Competition is great, I'm a, I love that, and, and there's another fee involved in that. Like Mr. Steele said, that if it's their equipment, they will come out and rectify the situation. And I know you don't have anything to say about rates or anything, but every, every, excuse me, every time they have, every time I get a bill, it's increased and increased, increased, and I have the same situation. I don't understand that at all. Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I just want to say one thing, George, we, we have, as a company right now, we probably have about three hundred and fifty thousand customers. We're in, we're in the Chicago area, we're in New York City, we're in Washington, D.C., we're in Pennsylvania, and here in Boston. We, three hundred and fifty thousand customers, I mean, Comcast has twenty-one million, I mean, you can't even count them. Here in, here in the Boston market, we have about fifty-two thousand cable customers, we have more customers, not in addition to that, but we have fifty-two thousand cable customers. So when you call, you are, you are very important to us. I mean, we, we do not have the, we are totally committed to customer service. You will find your experience to be very different when there's competition, because you won't have to be calling Comcast, you'll call us, and we'll, you'll be surprised how much we will work with you, and then you'll also be surprised at how much Comcast will want to work with you in the future as well. So it'll be, it'll be a nice experience, it's, it's a little bit, it's a little bit empowering to have choice, it is.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak, or, yes, wait, here's another question. Be patient, Mrs. Steele.
Hi, Luan Meola, M E O L A, four seventy-four Revere Beach Boulevard, Revere. I have a question for R C N. I never thought in two thousand seventeen I'd be living back in the Stone Age, but I am because I have no TV whatsoever off of. My problem is, if we call your customer service and you say they're going to be so generous and nice to us, are we calling within the country, or are we going to call out of the country, like Comcast? That is my biggest question.
Go ahead.
Would you like to answer that?
Go ahead. You're gonna answer that.
We are one hundred percent here in the United States. Yeah, we have, our major operating center for customer service is in Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania, Wilkes-Barry, Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania. I can tell you, back before we had new owners in two thousand and ten, we outsourced customer service, it was a nightmare. We had, we were in the Philippines and it was terrible.
Oh, it is, it is horrendous.
When we, our new owners.
Could you speak into the mic? Anybody that speaks needs to speak into the mic.
Our new, our new owners insisted on bringing, we hired hundreds more customer service, and it's all U S A-based.
So my point being is, if you're coming, if you do get this contract in the competition, you come into the city, I have to look forward to at least another six months to a year before I can even know what's going on in the city of Revere, because Comcast will not help me in any way. All they want to do is dig up dirt on my mother, and my mother has passed away. So I just wanted to know, I just wanted to know if your customer service was going to be legit and in this country, because it belongs here. Thank you.
You have to talk into the mic when you speak.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You get a fresh start with us.
Okay. So they're hearing none? Yes. One more question? You have to get back up. State your name and your address, if you would.
My name again?
Please. You don't have to spell it.
Okay. Maxine Oborsky, forty-six Wade Park, North Revere. I just had a thought, I was thinking that if a technician comes out to the house and he, or she analyzes the problem, would it be advisable in any way, when he does analyze the problem, to have a list of what the charge would be to correct that problem in any way, rather than just say, you know, and make it a choice if, if, if we want the service or if we don't, or what the charge would be?
Go ahead. Do you like to answer that, please? Mrs. Steele, please. From R C N?
Yes, we have a rate card that says what our installation charge, and it does itemize some other costs as well that would be incurred based on circumstance.
Okay. Hearing you, norther. Anybody else like to speak? Would you like to speak or ask a question?
Excuse me?
Would you like to speak or ask a question?
I gotta ask a question.
Okay, go ahead. Name and, name and.
Mike Stow, S T O W E L, eleven Mill Street, V M S.
Thank you.
You say you have to build a system. Does that mean you have to change the wires going into the house and the wires throughout the house?
Go ahead.
We can use the existing wiring unless it's, has problems, we can, ninety-nine percent of the time, we use the existing wiring in the home. The drop will, we have to build on the poles, and then the drop will come to the house, and then we use the existing wiring.
Okay. Again, I'm going to ask, does anybody else who'd like to speak or ask any other question? Who would like to speak about this again? Please come up to the microphone. If not, Mrs. Steele, thank you very much for R C N.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you. I do want to say this, a number of times tonight, it was brought up about rates. I personally have served, along with Ms. Ty, on the Cable Advisory Commission. This is actually my, out of five, this is my third one. Commission. This is actually my, uh, out of five, this is my third one. Uh, I did this over 30 years ago, and as I, um, see it, and I, uh, believe Ms. Ty would corroborate with this, is that every commission, every committee tries to do the best they can for the citizens of Revere. Uh, the legisla, the regulations that oversee cable TV, uh, are very restrictive. Again, I want to say that, uh, as far as rates and programming, it's not something the committee or the mayor can regulate. Uh, when you negotiate, there's only certain topics you can bring up. You're very limited. However, I remember all of the, uh, committees that I served on, and, uh, and all the members of every committee, even the ones I didn't serve on, they all tried, and, to provide the public with the best system for the best cost. And every mayor since then, uh, since, uh, actually it was Colonial Cable TV that came in, and the, uh, when they came in, and, this was brought into the city as Mr. Powers, Council Powers, it's mentioned, you know, the rates were very low. And because of inflation for a number of reasons, because of services they offered, they've increased. Uh, we, there's been some innovative ways of changing, uh, how much the, uh, cable company gives back to the city, you know, over the years, and how, uh, uh, lessen the burden on the, uh, rate payer. However, you know, again, the mayor and the committee are, they always try their hardest, and all five of those committees, well, all four of those committees previous to this, and this committee will be trying the hardest to make certain that the city of Revere citizens, um, and, uh, when they are advising the mayor, that the city of Revere citizens will be getting the best package they possibly can negotiate. And that has been throughout the, uh, uh, time that cable's been in the city of Revere. However, because of the limitations, there's very, uh, little that can be done on rates and programming, in fact, there's nothing in there being done on rates and programming. So hopefully, the cable companies get, uh, more innovative on how the, um, services are provided to the community. Uh, with that, um, if there's no further testimony, and that concludes today's public hearing. Uh, I will keep, uh, the hearing open for 14 days in order to receive additional testimony. Uh, interested parties are encouraged, uh, to submit written testimony on any, on any related issue discussed today, indeed regarding any cable-related issue. Uh, written testimony or comments may be submitted to the mayor's office. Uh, those comments should be sent to the mayor's office, Revere City Hall, 281 Broadway, uh, Revere, Massachusetts, 02151. If you have any questions about today's hearing on the cable television process, please call the mayor's office at 781-286-8111. Thank you all for attending today's meeting, ascertainment hearing, and thank you very much, and have a good evening. Thank you.